Let's see, council and staff are here with the exception of Ms. Angelo who was out ill this evening. Interim librarian is here, police chief, public works, planning, the money lady, and the rest of us. Under additions to the agenda this evening, I want to share something with you. I tried to put this off on staff, but they're not here. I want to share something from our city attorney that's addressed to the council, from David Roden, dated today's date, and the subject is the Katinka Brink appeal to the city council. And I'm going to read this kind of slowly and carefully, and I'll try not to stumble over too much of it. "It is important that the mayor and city council be advised as a matter of public record of the status of the hearing procedure in the above personnel matter. As Katinka Brink appealed the action terminating her as librarian for the City of State and Library, continuing efforts have been exerted to schedule the date of the appeal hearing before the mayor and state and city council as expeditiously as feasible. The State and Personnel Manual declares that a hearing on appeal shall take place within 30 days from the date of the appeal. Information furnished indicates that a hearing date within that 30-day period was not feasible for Ms. Brink. At my direction, Ms. Brink was asked to and did waive the 30-day limitation. With the council's adoption of the personnel matters appeal policy and procedure adopted February 1st, 2016, the time within which a personnel appeal may be heard was extended to 60 days with the provision that appellate documentation be filed seven days prior to the meeting. A myriad of dates have been proposed but deemed not satisfactory by Ms. Brink. City staff have gone to great effort to accommodate the appellate in scheduling a hearing date before the mayor council. Deputy city recorder Alyssa Angelo's message to the mayor council of February 9th this year, Exhibit A is attached, recites the chronology of that effort. Accordingly, by date of February 12th, 2016, the city has designated the hearing date options available to appellate Brink. The attached Alyssa Angelo letter of February 12th this year, which includes the agreement of termination of appeal hearing date, has been provided to Ms. Brink, such is self-explanatory." That's Exhibit B. "The mayor and council shall be promptly notified as to the actual appeal hearing date upon confirmation." And that's that letter. So we'll read that into the record. Okay. Are there any other additions to the agenda this evening? Declarations of ex-party contact, conflict of interest, bias, unhappiness, et cetera? No? Okay. Presentation comments from the public. I don't have any green slips, but we can take comments from the public. The State and Public Library Foundation has an endowment contribution, and if they would like to come to the microphone and take care of that.
Mr. Mayor, city council members, thank you so much. This is always so fun. It's been about a year since we were here last. My name is Deana Ferraris, and I'm currently serving as the Foundation Board, State and Public Library Foundation Board President, and I'm accompanied by Kendall and her mother, Brenda Moore, who is our Development Director for the foundation. So it is with great pleasure, we have a contribution to the library, to the city, on behalf of the Library Foundation. We prepared a small statement because last year we felt a little underprepared. So, dear city council members and those in attendance, the State and Public Library Foundation Board of Directors is proud to share with you the successes we had alongside the City of State and staff during the 2015 calendar year. It was a year marked by collaboration, invigorated staff and volunteers, and innovative approaches to community outreach. We hope to continue this positive relationship and look forward to furthering our joint efforts with the City of State and to provide local residents with Oregon Spinas Community Library. In 2015, we had the following successes along the city and library staff. The sold-out third annual Santee Am Canyon Father Daughter Ball in April, a revived Bytes and Brews event in October, a long list of new grant applications and awards, and fundraising for the installation of new lights in the library, which actually bridged the prior fiscal year as well. These successes directly underwrite our ability to financially support the State and Public Library for the budget year 2015-16. These successes are the reason the State and Public Library Foundation will be able to continue funding the beloved Outreach Storyteller Program, as well as award an operating grant to the City of State and for the current budget year. The State and Public Library Foundation continues to stand proudly in support of our city's exceptional library and its staff, and we are most grateful for their role in our successes. Thank you. So I really want to applaud Brenda as well as she walks up with the check. Brenda's been on staff for a year and a half, and she's been essential to not only that invigorated volunteer and staff collaboration, also very much a joy to work with, but we just hope to continue and further a great partnership. So thanks for giving us a forum tonight, and don't spend it all in one place unless it's at the library.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks very much.
Thank you.
Would it be in order to ask what the...
It's a $25,000.
$25,000?
$200.
Whoa. That's impressive. Thanks, ladies, and Library Foundation. Let's see. Anything else this evening under comments from the public? Anything right now? There'll be another opportunity late in the meeting? Okay. Consent agenda, February 1st, 2016, city council minutes, and Resolution Number 940, a budget transfer. Would you folks like to do with that? Anyone?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I'll offer a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented.
Okay.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to adopt the February 1st city council minutes and Resolution Number 940, a budget transfer as presented. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign? Hearing none? Declare the motion passed, and we'll go into our business. We have right now a public hearing on ordinance number 993 regarding misuse development in the commercial retail and commercial general zones. Mr. Fleishman.
Do you have an opening statement in front of you, Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I'm probably supposed to.
Well, I know you're supposed to. That's why I asked if you did.
Always good to ask on that one, though, Dan.
993?
993? 940?
If you don't, and if Keith can't find it in all of his stuff, I'll provide...
Where'd it go?
I'll do my best.
It's on... What? Oh! No, police activity. Yes. No. Whoops.
No, we don't care about that.
That's not it either. Well, that's what happens when we don't have a list of... We have to read a little bit before we can have a public hearing.
Yeah, unfortunately. But if we don't have it, I'll paraphrase it best I can. There it is.
Saved. Thank you. Script to be read at commencement of public hearing. Good evening. My name is Hank Porter, the mayor of State, and I'll be presiding over this hearing. This is the time and place set for the public hearing in the matter of land use file 1-01, 1-01, day 16, concerning legislative amendments to the Land Use Development Code regarding misuse developments in the commercial zone. The hearing is now open. At the back counter is the agenda for this evening's meeting, which lays out the order in which people will be called on to speak during the public hearing, a copy of the proposed amendments, the city council's rules of procedure for land use public hearings, and a brochure written to facilitate your participation in the public hearing. You are encouraged to obtain and read a copy of these documents as well. At this time, I would ask the audience if there are any objections to the notice for this hearing. I hear none to the jurisdiction of this body to hear and consider the matter. I hear none. Are there any declarations of conflict of interest, ex-party contact, or bias by any members of this body? And I hear none. We are now ready for the staff report. Mr. Fleishman.
There we go. Well done. So as was said in the opening statement, this is a public hearing on proposed legislative text amendments to the Land Use and Development Code. Currently, because of the way various terms in the code are defined, the code allows mixed-use buildings in the commercial general and the commercial retail zone, provided that the residential uses are on the second floor, and the ground floor is used for commercial purposes. Because of the way terms are defined, and it is only multifamily developments for which that are permitted in the commercial retail and commercial general zone, as such, a mixed-use building would have to have at least four dwelling units in it, and the code would not allow a mixed-use building to have one, two, or three dwelling units on the second or taller floors. So when this issue was brought to the planning commission back in November, they agreed that it made sense to amend the code. An amendment was prepared. The planning commission held a public hearing at their January meeting and has made a unanimous recommendation to the city council that the code be amended as is presented to you. And the amendment that, as proposed, would permit single-family attached and detached structures, duplexes, and triplexes with the same footnote in the land use table that today applies to multifamily buildings, meaning that the residential uses would have to be on the second floor of a mixed-use, second or higher floor of a mixed-use building. And with that, I'll answer any questions.
Questions from the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Brian? Dan, was there a specific reason this came up?
It came up because someone came in my office saying that he hadn't mind building a new building with a business on the first floor and apartment on the second, or one dwelling unit upstairs. And I said, oh, that sounds great. And then I looked at the code, and I said, oh, doesn't sound so great after all, but I can't explain why the code would say what it says, so let's go to the planning commission and see if they're willing to initiate an amendment.
That was my next question. Was it written just for density purposes, or do we now speculate?
It is a carryover from the code from decades ago, so I couldn't begin to tell you. And when we went, you know, what the origin of it was, other than it said multifamily is permitted in these zones, provided it's part of a mixed-use development and not on the ground floor.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Ma'am?
So Dan, this doesn't narrow anything. This actually widens?
Yes, this expands the uses that are permitted, whereas today's code would require at least four dwelling units in a mixed-use building.
Okay. Good. Questions?
So then, Mr. Mayor, and then if we pass this, then this fellow could have just one.
Correct.
And is there any impact? I mean, if... What do you think impact would be?
I think it will make it more likely that we see new mixed-use buildings in the commercial zone. While I think there's probably substantial demand for new, nice rental housing in the city, there is not the demand enough for new commercial space to justify buildings large enough to contain enough commercial space on the ground floor to support four or more dwelling units on the upper floors.
Thank you.
Other questions from council? How about proponents' testimony? Those in favor of this, please.
Good evening, council. My name's James Taylor. Currently, well, we've got our business down on 210 East Water Street. Actually, you know, this, I was the one who went and talked to Dan, because we'd like to build another building on 110 that we own, but obviously, as we talked, yes, it's in a zone where, yes, you can do the mixed-use residential above, but it would have to be, like he says, four units or more. Currently, the building we're looking at would be about 2,500 square foot on the ground floor, so if you take that 2,500 and divide it by four, you end up with rather small dwellings, and that's why we talked to him about it. I know that there are a few buildings downtown. Of course, they're old structures, probably prior to any of the codes, that are actually two, you know, double residences above the commercial zone. What we're envisioning is possibly actually having it where, yes, it'll be a larger, or I mean, a large living area, one part of it, and then a smaller apartment is what we're looking at, so it'd be a double residency upstairs on that 2,500 square foot. But that's why we talked to Dan and found out that, yes, it's permitted within that zone, but had to be the four or more, and hence he went, and I thank him for going forward and asking the planning commission to look at changing that to one, two, or three, you know, and not holding it down to just four. Because it would be nice to, you know, there's still some more lots downtown that could be developed, and possibly they could develop those the same way, commercial downstairs and, you know, one, two residential above, and encourage, you know, some residential downtown and, you know, along with more commercial downtown.
Okay. All right. Super. Thank you. Thanks very much. Anyone else? Or others? Anyone? Okay. Are there any opponents' testimony? Anyone that wants to vociferously attack this proposal? No? Okay. General testimony? I like the idea, if that's worth anything. Yeah. Yeah. Anyone? Questions from the public? Questions from the council? Anyone? Staff summary. Mr. Fleishman.
I don't have anything else to add. You've got ordinance 933 in front of you, and... What did I say? Oh, 993, Public Works Director corrects me.
993? Okay.
In front of you to...
Okay.
For your consideration.
All right. Thank you. Well, with that, we'll go ahead and close the hearing and go to council deliberation. What would you folks like to do with this one?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes? Brian?
I'll offer a motion to approve the first consideration of ordinance number 993.
I'll second that.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second to approve the first reading of ordinance 993 regarding mixed-use developments in the commercial retail and commercial general zones. Any discussion? Okay. Let's go to a vote on that. Keith, would you poll the council, please?
Counselor Gladwell?
Aye.
Counselor Quigley?
Aye.
Counselor Niegel?
Yes.
Counselor Usman?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Vote should pass this 5-0.
Okay. Thank you. So that was just the first reading. Do we need to go? Do we need to bring it back? Next time?
No, because this vote was unanimous. It is, the ordinance is presented to you for your signature.
This be it. Council's decision may be appealed to Land Use Board of Directors within 21 days in accordance with the Oregon Revised Statutes Number 197.830. Moving right along. Unfinished business? None. New business? Ownership of open space? Ken, am I getting close enough to that microphone to come through? Okay. Project. Ownership of open space? Wildlife Meadows Master Plan Development. Mr. Fleishman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The issue before the council is a determination as to whether the city should assume the ownership of the open space in the proposed Wildlife Meadows Master Plan Development. RJR Properties Company has submitted an application to the city for this subdivision, which is located on Chaff Road immediately to the east of the State and Middle School campus. It's about a 17-acre parcel that is proposed to have 44 lots with a mix of single-family detached, single-family attached, and duplex homes for a total of 48 dwelling units. The proposal is to create a roughly three-acre open space parcel that would be along the northern border of the property, along Mill Creek. The applicant proposes to develop a paved pedestrian or non-motorized path along in the open space, as well as several paved parking spaces for accessing the area. The code says that when, that open space in a master plan development shall be owned either by the city at the sole discretion of the council, or by some nonprofit organization such as a lot owners association, or some other nonprofit whose main goal is to hold open space and not to develop it. So it is up to the city council to determine whether the city will accept ownership of this parcel. When the planning commission approved the conceptual plan at their November hearing, one of their conditions of approval was that after the detailed development plan is submitted, but before the planning commission's public hearing on that plan, that the city council needed to make a determination as to whether the city would accept ownership for it. The city accepting the ownership of the parcel will mean that we do have long-term management costs. We will assume the maintenance responsibilities for it. The Public Works Department has indicated that they've got the financial resources to take on this additional responsibility. The applicant and his engineer are present this evening, that if you have questions that staff can't answer, they may be able to. And with that, I'll try to answer any questions you have.
Dan, you folks thought of a period of time on this developer maintained stormwater management area? What kind of time are you thinking, as far as years, decades? Centuries?
Typically speaking, Mr. Mayor, the stormwater management facilities will be owned, or will be maintained by the developer for up to two years, at which time we will make a survey of plantings in the facilities. If those plantings are, have a mortality rate of, I believe it's 85% or better, then the city shall take ownership at that time. But it'll be a minimum of two years that the owner will maintain that facility. At that which point, the city will...
Okay. Good. Thank you. Other questions? Counselors?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
Lance, when we take ownership of any property, there's some kind of liability matrix that we have that has a checklist of stuff we foresee in the future, or I think we need to look at that from a broader standpoint before we just assume the donation. Certainly, we want to get, we want to get stuck with like a timeshare or something of that nature, a donation to the city property-wise, and I think we need to look at it from a long standpoint, saying, we're talking about, for example, the same one that's in Quail Run, that piece of property that's over there. Dan, you know what I'm talking about? That park over there, that little open? Wasn't there an issue with that a couple of years ago about maintaining it and how it was designated open space, or?
Quail Run Park that you were talking to?
It's a, yeah, it's not actually the park itself. There's a piece of property within that development that's owned by the, owned by the neighborhood, and at some point, there was some question about ownership.
Oh, in, in...
Maybe not Quail Run.
It's not Quail Run. It's in Sylvan Springs.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Sylvan Springs. And that came to be a big decision about who maintained it, who owned it, because the developer that owned it initially, I think, phased out, or something occurred where there was a question about who owned it.
Well, there's several pieces of open space in the Sylvan Springs development area that were deeded to the homeowners association. All of that preceded my arrival here at the city, so I don't know to what extent there was discussion as to whether the city should, or...
Okay, fair enough.
...obtained ownership at that time or not. There is one of the open space tracts there that Marion County Assessor's records still show as being owned by the developer, not by the homeowners association. So there may never have been a deed executed.
I guess what I'm getting is, I want to make sure we cover our bases as far as what liability exposure the city has by taking that donation on, not just piece here and piece there.
I think the way this would work, and I believe the developer can speak to this as well, or the developer's engineer, but it's been my experience, something like this would, we'd have platted, it'd be a tract. Tract A, for example. Tract A is the open space. Tract A will be dedicated to the City of State, at which time, once we take ownership, which will be probably one year. We're talking about two different things. First, the mayor was talking about stormwater facilities. Stormwater facilities will be two years. The park itself, I think in discussing it with Dan, we thought perhaps one year of the owner maintaining that park and making sterile the grasses are established. After one year, if the city recognizes that the plantings are good and acceptable, we would take ownership of that open space. But it would be shown on the plaque, which will be a public record, a public document that shows that we will be owner.
I guess, I can give you a hypothetical situation. Say we acquired a piece of property in that nature, and it turned out that soil was contaminated at some point. So now we just inherited this property with soil contamination that's going to cost us X number of dollars to clean up. That's what I'm getting at. How do we make sure we cover our bases on a property we accept?
Well, it really depends on the property itself. If they were in industrial area, before we take ownership, we'd make them go through DQ testing and so forth to make sure that that site is clean before we take, take ownership of something like that. This is basically a farm, an old field that he farmed.
I got you. I'm just exploring from a matrix standpoint, going into the future and how we would...
I think each piece of property is going to be dealt with separately, and depending on where it's located and what the history of that property is, we'll make determinations of what would be required from the city prior to even taking ownership, or even discussing whether we take ownership.
Sure.
Okay. Madam Consular?
So the piece of property that we're talking about, is it surrounded by the actual homes being built, or is it actually sited by Chaff Road?
This property is actually at the north end of the property. It'll be, have Mill Creek to the north, and the property will be just south of Mill Creek for, I think it's 150 feet or so. I don't have the...
So, the piece of property that we're talking about, is it surrounded by the actual homes being built? Or is it actually sited by Chaff Road?
This property is actually at the north end of the property, it'll be, have Mill Creek to the north, and the property will be just south of Mill Creek for, I think it's a hundred and fifty feet or so, I don't have the dimensions in front of me, but... We will, it'll be back from Chaff Road, a good six hundred feet or so.
I guess my point is, is it, is, obviously, the park in Quail Run's a good example. Every, the users of that park are the people who live in those houses that surround that park. People don't come from, or maybe, but, but generally, it's not people from over here take their kids to Quail Run to play. So that, the main use of that is by the homeowners in that area. So that's what I'm asking, is, is it that little park that we're going to have there is totally surrounded by the people who live there? Why wouldn't it be more advantageous if those people had a vested interest in maintaining that park themselves?
The, the, this part, this open space area is at one end of the proposed subdivision, so will not be surr- like, unlike Quail Run or Saint Ammont Park, it will not be surrounded by residences. It is part of the adopted parks master plan and transportation master plan to have a linear park along Mill Creek. So, this provides one piece of that, and until such time as the trail is extended from here, I don't envision that this will be a place people go, it will not be developed with playground or play equipment or ball fields. It really is a linear park, it's one part of the trail system, and will also have these, there's a, there's currently an existing year-round pond there now, and it will have this stormwater detention facility that will be a, shall we say, seasonal pond in it as well. But it's not going to be a, a playground area, or it's not going to have ball fields in it.
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Counselor?
I personally think this is a great idea, and if it's part of the master trail system, then we should jump on it. I am skeptical that homeowners associations are able to properly maintain parks going along, and they tend to have a lot of problems, so I would say we do it.
This park borders State and Middle School, correct?
Correct.
So it could be used by the students of State and Middle School and by the community?
Yeah, but it's a public park.
Yes.
Right, correct. And, and will provide, the, the trail, the trail that will be built here will provide access to the trails that are on the, the back forty of the middle school.
Good.
Other questions and thoughts? No? Okay. Folks ready to go to the decision?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I would move that we accept public ownership of the open space in the Wildlife Meadows subdivision.
Second?
I have a motion and a second to accept city ownership of the open space in the Wildlife Meadows Master Plan Development. Is there any other discussion, please? Keith, again, would you poll the council on this one?
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Russellman?
Yes.
Counselor Niegel?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Aye.
Counselor Gladwell?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
All right, thank you, folks. Next item is ordinance number nine nine four, amending the State and Municipal Code Title five oh eight and five point three two. Chief Seabees?
Mayor and council, I bring to you tonight ordinance nine nine four, which has stated amends five, State Municipal Code five point zero eight and five point three two. Those particular sections of the code address the second-hand and pawn, pawnbroker licensing, and how it regulates the property that they sell. I was recently asked by one of the local businesses that deals in second-hand property if we would go back and amend our code. He had said, told me that our code was, was out, quite outdated from what other municipalities are, are using and doing at the time. And I read through it and looked at it with him, and I agreed with him. So what we did was, I took several different codes from numerous different cities around the area. The two that I mostly looked at were Springfield and Portland, which had two very well-written codes that had to do with second-hand dealers. I made the revisions to them, and then I worked with those, with, with the different business owners in town that, that deal in second-hand properties, particularly with the two that deal mainly with those types. We, we do have seconds, six different businesses in town that deal with second-hand properties, and two that are mainly more second, more which you would classify as your second-hand pawnbrokers. And they were all very happy with the changes that we made in it. One of the things that it does do is it brings into them up to using electronic reporting, which helps the police department as well as the, the property owners on making sure their, their properties that they're selling are not stolen properties before and after they get them.
Okay, thank you, Chief. Counselor deliberation on this? Anyone, anything?
Chief, so originally, the only real changes were to five dot three two, right? I didn't see too many in five dot oh eight.
Correct, five point oh eight, several years ago, we had them in, we had pawnbrokers and second-hand dealers in, under the licensing, and they were pulled out when the ordinance position was, was removed from the city.
You're reinserting it?
We, we were reinserting them in there, and that was actually at their request. One of the, the dealers requested that they be added into the licensing process, because it gives them legitimacy when they're doing business with other out-of-the-area businesses. That way they can say that they have a business license with the state, with the city.
Chief, it's pop, I think it's certainly among my small circle, it's popularly believed that the city by code or whatever doesn't allow pawn shops, is that? Where does that come, where does that perception come from? We don't have any, so we just, that's why?
I, I, I wouldn't know why, why that, that perception is there, we do allow for pawn shops under our current code.
There's a different set of rules though, right? I mean, aren't there some, what, state rules or something?
They're going to fall under state, state regulations.
Okay, that's it there, all right, okay.
Excuse me, Ms. Mayor, don't we have a, we have a pawn shop?
No.
We don't?
No, we have a second-hand, second-hand dealers. The difference between the two are that pawn shops take in money for, or take in property for loan, and so they would hold that property for so many days, you know, for, say I take in a, if I'm the pawn dealer, I would take in somebody's...
So that little shop by, by that little grocery store there isn't like that, huh?
No, there's strictly a second-hand.
Okay. Other thoughts and questions on this one? Okay. You folks ready to make a decision on this one?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
So Chief, just to confirm, the main change here is going from paper to electronic, essentially?
No, that, that's, that's one of the main changes. One of the other main changes is addressing some of the property issues that they had. They were taking in property that was not trackable whatsoever, and they asked that be removed. And another one that they asked to have removed was gold bullion.
I saw that.
And that has to do with the seven-day wait period. When they take in and purchase gold bullion from somebody, they, they buy it from the person based on the pricing that they're getting at, at the moment, right at the time. And if they have to wait seven days, that gold price is changed by the hour, and so they can be out thousands of dollars if they wait seven days to sell. And there's really no tracking on gold bullion, you can't tell one lump of gold from the next.
Chief, we don't have a, a business license at this time, do we?
We do for the businesses that are listed in five, five point oh eight.
I mean, that's, it just seems like it's gone back and forth over the years of, of having, having business licenses and not having business licenses, maybe...
We, we don't have...
Maybe it's confusion on a local level, I'm not sure.
We don't have business licenses for the general, the general businesses, so that, so that every single business does not have to have a license in town. We have certain ones that are under the regulations, and, and most of them have to do it because of, of law enforcement purposes.
Okay. I kind, I work with someone who constantly denies that he has a second-hand business, although the place is full of second-hand stuff, but... Not, not me. Anyway, it's funny to be there and, and listen to this for years, not me. Okay, what would you folks like to do with that? Ready to go to a decision, somebody?
Mr. Mayor? I would move to approve ordinance number nine nine four as presented.
I second it.
Got a motion and a second on this end of the table to approve ordinance nine nine four as presented. Amending State and Municipal Code five point oh eight and five point three two. Let's just go to a voice vote on this one. On ordinances, Keith, you better poll the councils, thank you.
Counselor Niegel?
Yes.
Counselor Russellman?
Yes.
Counselor Lewis?
Aye.
Counselor Gladwell?
Yes.
Counselor Quigley?
Yes.
Okay.
Motion passes five oh.
Decision there, thank you. Next item is resolution number nine forty-one, refinancing bonds, and Ms. Schaefer?
Yes, Mayor, City Council, I'm here this evening to ask for your blessing for the finance department to refinance the existing water debt that is, is issued at three point four percent interest today. The bond market's extremely favorable right now with the volatile stock market, and City of Sherwood just closed a refinancing bond with the overall issuance of two point two six. So we feel like this is a good opportunity to get right out there and try to get great pricing. So, in order for the finance department to move forward, we need you to adopt this resolution. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Okay. Christine? I better not, I don't, I don't understand this well enough to ask a, a really intelligent question, so I'm going to pass on that one. This is a, this is a good idea though, right?
This will save the city, yes.
Well, you're saving money, yeah.
Up to, I, I mean, the estimates that are provided here are very conservative, from three point eight percent as the overall issuance to three point five six. And we'd save anywhere from two hundred and eighty-two to three hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars on that issuance.
That's worth doing, that's worth doing, you bet.
So, what's the term on that, then, the same?
It'll be the same term.
Gotcha.
Other questions? Somebody that understands bond finance can surely come up with some really neat question to ask Christine. No?
Mr. Mayor?
Here, I thought that was the one. Go ahead, please.
I'll offer a motion to approve resolution number nine four one, which directs the finance director to refinance water debt with the bond refunding.
And I'll second that.
All right, I have a motion and a second to approve resolution nine forty-one, which is refinancing bonds, I'm not going to do the rest of it. Any other thoughts or questions? Let's just go to a voice vote on that. All in favor, say aye, please.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Hearing done, we'll declare the motion passed five to zero, and staff commission reports, Ms. Schaefer again, monthly, finance department.
Yes, I really have nothing very exciting to add, I just wanted to point out that, that maybe the AP check run seems a little high for the month of January, and that's because we had the Pioneer Parks construction project going as well as the debt service payment due, so...
Okay. Thank you, Christine.
Yes, thank you.
Chief Seabees?
Mayor and council, when you walked in, you probably found a, an updated statistical report on your desk in front of you there. If you could swap that out with the, the one that you had there, there was a, I made a, transpose two numbers around when running the, the categorized report, and the one that you had, I ran through the thirteenth instead of through the thirty-first, and so that's an updated, it's an updated report. The only thing that changed on the front sheet based on that back, that second report was the traffic accidents. We actually had seven traffic accidents versus the two that it showed originally. As far as everything else, everything else on that statistical report is in line, but one thing that I would like to let you know that we're looking at doing is a, is a safe, a safe location within the police department lobby for people to exchange children when they make custodial changes and trades between two, two different parents, or foster parent meeting places, it's a safe place with, with the video camera in place in there. And also for people that want to make sales, with Craigslist sales, there's a lot of those sales that go on, and people don't necessarily feel comfortable making the sales and meeting somebody that they don't know in a, in an unsafe location, and we want to put that as, as an offer, as a place for people to, to meet their, person that they're going to sell, sell or buy the property from. Lebanon Police Department recently did that in, in their lobby, and has received a lot of good comments from the public for doing that. It's been well-received.
Chief? Being downtown, there's, you hear a certain amount of information, probably not as much as we should, but some. Do we make any effort at all to inform people living in just the, the immediate area of the city that they have problems with whatever? Unless it's an emergency to call the county, people, these are people living in the county, but, you know, very close to the city.
I'm not sure I'm following your question.
Okay, somebody has a theft, okay, living way out on the end of Kendall, way out toward the golf course on Kendall. Downtown, over the last couple of days, expressing frustration over not getting any action out of our folks, they finally called the county. And they live in the county, but they started with us, is there any, do we need, do we need to do anything about that? Not just that incident, but just generally informing people in that adjacent area to the city that, you know, you don't pay city taxes, you live in the county, call the county, unless it's an emergency, and then we'll help.
Most, I would say most of those people probably know that they live in the county, but if they don't, we're very, very happy to explain that to them, that that's who they would need to call. We haven't in the past gone to those neighbors and let them know that that's where they would go to. I know the people on Park Road are very, very aware that, that they're in the county, and that it's the county that responds to those incidents.
Okay. But out, let's see, what's another one, there's some homes out on...
There's one off of Mount Jefferson Drive up at the, at the top of the hospital hill, there's like two residences up there that are, that, they, they look like they're within the city, but they're actually in the county. Kendall Way, and then also out Park Road, those are the three main ones.
Out to Old Mahima, toward the intersection with twenty-two, is that another, some of that is not...
That's more of a, more of a definite line at the, at the end, they're just past the last house, it's a definite, that they're outside the city.
So not a big problem, but just, yeah, yeah, okay. Oh, where were we? Let's see, is that it, Chief?
Yes.
Okay. Public Works Director, Lance?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, you have my, or the Public Works Monthly Operating Report for the, the month of January. I have nothing further to add to it, but I'll be more than happy to answer any questions you may have regarding it or anything else going on at Public Works.
Mr. Mayor?
Go ahead, please.
Lance, what's the latest update with Pioneer Park?
Pioneer Park, Brian, I'm sorry, councilman. I actually are processing the final payment today, so it is complete, there are some punch list items that they have to, they have to do, but we're holding back five percent...
back 5 percent retainage until such time as those items are complete. And of course, we have their performance bond still, and once they are complete, I'll be asking for a maintenance bond in the amount of 30 percent of that performance bond, so we have some leverage to get these items done. But it is complete. We're still working on the activity pavilion. I had Kenyon Contracting put a slab in, I think they finished Saturday. There's some work to be done. I have a couple of picnic tables to install there, and we're going to try to put a handicap ramp in and a sidewalk going over to that facility as well, soon, shortly.
Mayor, we also have a presentation scheduled for our next council meeting as well to actually talk about the park.
Okay. Lance, in looking at the ongoing maintenance and repair on Jordan Bridge, is it, the damage about what, or the deterioration about what, what you thought it'd be, or more or less, or what? Where are we?
Well, I'm going to have to give that to Christine or Keith. I, I have been kind of out of the loop with that, making facilities over, so.
Okay. So this was the item that I had for, for my business from the city administrator, so we'll talk about it now. We did close the bridge on Monday, we expect to be closed for two weeks as we do repairs. Did have a conversation with Mike Brash, who's overseeing that today, and regard, we are going to need to look at a comprehensive plan, long-term plan, for the care and maintenance of that. I have a piece of, of wood that came out of one of the crossbeams that they removed, and it really shows some wood rot and, and some real concerns with the condition of the bridge. And so, we need to look at that comprehensively, examine that, and come up with a, a plan. As Mike said, you know, that from the outside, some of these look pretty good, but as you look at the inside, and that's why he brought that to my office today, you know, it doesn't look quite as, as, as good. But we have been working on trying to do that, trying to do repairs, and, and so Mike's working now on trying to get a comprehensive, long-term plan on, on the care and maintenance. And it is an asset we, we have and, and need to work on, and as a, a wooden bridge, it's going to need, you know, care and upkeep. And so we need to be thinking about that and aggressive going forward and, and keeping ahead of those, those challenges.
Okay. You know, we, we just, we just built that thing in 98, and, I don't know, it, it just seems like it, it should be good for a lot longer time before it needs that, as much work as we've put into it. I thought that was the idea of a covered bridge, to keep the weather off it, but apparently, Keith, there's something about the direction, the way that, the direction it was built in, that it keeps getting those, those southwest rainstorms blow right in on it.
There, there's a couple issues. I mean, one of the big ones is the roof line probably should have been a little longer than what it initially was. The cost to, to fix that would be pretty significant at this point. But we are seeing one side of the bridge is taking more weather being, if you will, just kind of the natural flow of, of weather.
Okay, thank you. Planning and Activity Directors, oh, ma'am? Go ahead, please.
Can I ask a question? Totally off, but since you brought up this. So how come covered bridges can last like 100 years somewhere else? And the, and this one is already getting wood rotted. I mean, is, is the wood different now than it was 100 years ago?
Well, that's, that's part of it, I think. I think that's been established that, yeah.
Counsel coding.
And that was all fresh, that was all fresh wood in 98.
What's the difference between that and the, and the bridges that have been up for 100 years? Anybody know?
Well, we don't really know how those ones that are, how they're maintained, those 100-year-old bridges. They may have a, a yearly maintenance that goes on that we just don't have, so, you still know. It's tough to answer that question without to know the maintenance program for each one of those bridges.
I, I think, I think to touch on Lance's concerns is, is they do require constant care and maintenance and upkeep, and unfortunately, if you don't keep that up and maintain it, it, they can, they can deteriorate at a pretty rapid rate. And I was quite shocked about how much care and, and testing that you need to do on, on the bridge to just look for those things and not let, not let deterioration happen pretty quickly. And so, when we talk about sort of being more aggressive and, and thinking ahead and trying to stay on top of the care and maintenance, that's really what, what I'm trying to reference there is, is they just need constant care and, and attention, and if you don't do that, it can, it can deteriorate pretty quickly. Now whether, you know, with the 100 years, I, I can't say, but.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I guess, I guess I'm kind of surprised, because it wasn't just but two years ago that we replaced a couple of those crossbeams, didn't we?
We replaced four of the beams that run below the bridge, the support beams, and these are the crossbeams in the upper, upper section of the bridge that were now.
But there was an assessment at that time of the entire bridge, was there not?
Uh, there was, and that's where part of the, the work we're doing right now is, is, is being done based off of that assessment.
Okay. Other questions or thoughts on that one? Planning and Development Directors report, Mr. Fleishman?
Good, thank you. You've got my written report to, to add to it, more reflecting the past couple weeks than, than January, but things seem to be picking up as far as interest in development. We've had, we had a pre-application meeting today on a, on a possible project, and for the first time in the almost 10 years that I've been here, the February Planning Commission meeting will have three public hearings on development proposals before it, so things are, are looking like they'll get busier around here.
Okay, thank you, Dan. So is building and development is looking up, good. Library Directors report, Pam Pugsley. Pam?
Mayor Porter, councilors, I have nothing to add. Everything is going fine in the library.
Okay, all right. Thank you, all right. And presentations, comments from the public, anything? Anything that, this time of the evening? Anything? Business from the city administrator?
I have nothing further to add at this time, Mayor, thank you.
Okay. I have nothing this evening other than what we've already done. Business from the council, thoughts and questions?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Brian?
I'd like to share with you an experience that I had yesterday in regards to one of our officers with the police department. I noticed an individual that was in some sort of distress, be it under the influence or otherwise, and the response by Officer Hankins and the medics that came to assist this individual was nothing short of very professional and outstanding in the manner which they addressed her, and in the end, helped her. I think she was lost, definitely needed some attention, and Tim was very professional in his, the way he addressed it, his mannerisms with her interaction, as well as the medics that show up. So my hat's off to him and all the guys in the police department that go out there every day and, and serve our community well, so I appreciate that.
Okay, thank you. That was good. Other thoughts there? Future agenda items for Monday, March 7th. Annual OLCC renewals, you know, I looked at that and it said annual rewards, and I thought, oh. But it's not, it's renewals, and Western Avenue BidCon, Bid Award. And Lance, that's, is that a paving award, or the Western Avenue Bid?
Yes, sir. That's exactly what it is. This year's overlay program would be Western Avenue.
Okay.
From Gardner West to the end of Western Place.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Uh, is there anything else this evening, folks? Okay, let's go home.